School Board meeting to order, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, public comment will occur during the public comment portion of the meeting and is done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, please state your name and ward so that it can be included in the minutes, and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy BEDH. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
There's not.
Except that we are going to move, so 7B, we don't have some, we're deleting 7B, and in that place, we're going to, in its place, we're going to move 10F to 7B. That makes sense? Okay, great, thanks. All right, which brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Is there any public comment online?
There is none.
Okay, and I think we're going to skip our student reports because it's finals, and correspondence.
There is none.
Okay, great. All right, this brings us to the consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the public minutes.
Make a motion to approve the public minutes of May 20.
I second the motion.
Motion by John, second by Richard. Is there any corrections?
Top of the...
Uh, yes, we're, sorry, what paragraph you want?
It's the dated. Think the conversation, there are some limitations.
Okay, yeah, and there are limitations from, in the federal government. Okay, great.
Down paragraph, I think we meant Hampshire, that paragraph?
Yes, from the federal government to New Hampshire. Yeah, Jen, you got it?
All right. And at page five, paragraph Kevin asked, there's, John asked if we don't receive funds, I think Richard, question. Wasn't me.
Richard, does that sound like?
That sounds like something I would have said, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, a question that I had on my mind. I'm happy to take credit for the question.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you.
On page six, the motion that Jessica made, Jessica stated the game through FNF and had been discussed with John, we should probably say John Kerber, because he wasn't at the meeting, and we just think it's me.
Excellent. Any other corrections? All right, so all those in favor of accepting the public minutes for May 28th as amended? No. Okay, and then the non-public minutes?
Make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of May 28th.
Seconded.
Okay, motion by John, second by Richard. Any corrections to those? No? All right, all those in favor of accepting the non-public minutes? Thank you. All right, so we're going to move to what was previously 10F, which is Discussion and Action: A Donation of $8,500 from the KARPs Classic to be used for basketball supplies. Did you guys want to say anything, or did you? Okay, great. Kim, do you want to say any additional information about this?
Just a reminder, a few years ago, these gentlemen and some others restarted the KARPs Classic using, instead of in other places, using the school district facilities. And what they do is they, they charge it, and after they pay their refs and everything, the rest of the money to the Lebanon District Basketball Program. So this is the nation from that, and we are super appreciative of your effort.
Any comments? Thank you very much for the donations, as usual, we really appreciate that, and thank you for supporting and for coming to support it. All right, so we need a motion to accept donation.
I'll make a motion that we receive a donation of $8,500 from the KARPs Classic.
Seconded.
All right, motion by John, second by Richard. All those in favor? And thank?
I have a question, make sure that still, as you say, all the sports programs for the middle school and high schools.
Yes.
That's correct, we created.
That's what it says. It is, great, thank you so much for the clarification, we appreciate it.
Thank you for the donation.
And thank you for the donation. All right, that takes us to the SAU Leadership Team Update.
Right, we have several items on the docket. First, I'm going to do a brief presentation of the strategic plan. The presentation is in your packet as well as the strategic plan, which we'll be asking for in action under new business. I am proud to present the Lebanon School District Strategic Plan, a three-year roadmap shaped by the voices of our students, staff, families, and community members. This plan is more than a set of goals, it's a collective vision of what kind of learners and graduates we want to cultivate in Lebanon. We entered this process knowing that we have a great school district, but any, like any other great learning organization, we are always committed to continuous improvement. There we go. All right, so our work, as stated before, was to develop a three-year strategic plan based on our community input that focuses efforts, creates coherence, and guides our decisions. This objective for this presentation is framing the strategic plan and revisions based on your feedback at the May, I believe, 28th meeting. At the heart of this strategic plan is a simple but powerful idea: We are a student-centered district. That means every decision we make, from instruction to budgeting, from professional development to curriculum, should be aligned with what our students need to thrive today and succeed tomorrow. This plan is rooted in our newly defined vision of a learner, K to eight, and vision of a graduate, nine to 12. These visions clarify not what we want our students to know, but what we want them to become: Curious, capable, compassionate individuals, ready to contribute to the communities in adapting to a changing world. We're shifting from the question from what are we teaching to a much more important one: Who are our students becoming? Next slide, Tyler. Over the past several months, we've reviewed feedback, we heard from this board and other audience members, we adjusted our goals and built coherence across all district areas. Our strategic plan will serve as a foundation that aligns our systems and structures, our curriculum and assessment, our professional learning, our operations, so we're all working towards a common student-focused outcome. Some of the changes, some of the changes from this board that were included, the vision of a graduated did not resonate with all of our stakeholders. So we have a vision of a learner now for all, and the vision of a graduate for Lebanon High School. We had language and alignment to increase accessibility and coherence, so we reorganized sections, and we revised the language, and we added a glossary to the document. Another question was the measurability of success indicators. So in this plan, we've added action steps to determine metrics in the first year. Another idea was understanding of curriculum and how to plan goals that support academic achievement. Our changes have become highlighted curriculum focus and communication, and intentional references to the connection between goals and academic achievement. Finally, feedback from our educators was the plan feasibility. So we created a one-page summary, which is concluded a page as a glance, and changed the word "timing" to "beginning." So we'll be beginning on those activities. As we stated before, our strategic plan goals are in four areas: Grow our students, grow our educators, grow our systems, and grow our family and community partnerships. Within there, we have six goals. As we move forward, and hopefully we move forward to adopt this plan, we will communicate this plan clearly and consistently, starting tomorrow, with our educators. We are going to provide monthly updates through net, no, sorry, newsletters and social media. We will create an online data dashboard when we launch our new website to ensure transparency, and I will share formal updates with the board twice a year while our school align, schools align their annual goals to this plan as well. This is going to be a living document, it's designed to evolve, grow, and guide. I'm incredibly proud of the collaboration that brought us here tonight, and I'm excited about this path and moving it forward. Together, we can build something meaningful, a future where every student in Lebanon is prepared, empowered, and inspired. Thank you. One more thing, in the packet, another feedback was the vision of a learner. In the presentation, you have the abbreviated one, I wanted to make sure, and it's included in the plan, but in an additional, in a separate document, of the visual of learner, and it does have the indicators down here that we made sure were written, that were clear, so our educators and our community members, our family members, could understand what we were talking about when we had those big ideas of what a vision of a learner would be. And as I mentioned before, the high school has that vision of graduate, which that work had started prior to COVID, and is embedded in their accreditation plan. So at the high school, as we move into ninth through 12th grade, this would go into that vision of a graduate.
So, does anybody have any questions now? This is a discussion and action item for later in the agenda, but do you have any questions now that, as you're hearing this, that you want to ask superintendent? Great, back to it.
All right, I'm still going. Next up is the presentation on District Goals 24-25. All right, so in September of 2024, our school board had adopted these district goals, so tonight is a presentation on the update on these goals and our work going forward. Goal one: Develop and refine the CIP, paying particular attention to the options for the SAU building. Our progress: Our CIP process and template has been refined, the CIP has been completed through 2028, and we have a draft until 2030, and we have recently met with a real estate agent on the SAU. We have given him some options to review. One is stay at the SAU and do nothing. Two would be say, sell the SAU and rent the space. What we found out, going through the deeds and from information from other people, there are some zoning implications of the SAU, so any change in use would need to go through the planning board to ask for a change in recommendations. Three, stay at the SAU and lease surplus space to others. So we've had conversations, if we would allow to lease space to other city departments, would we, we at the city task force talked about potential uses with the rec department, cybersecurity, human resources. The city is renting out space for other departments, so that would be an option similar to what we are doing with the fire department. Four would be sell the, sell the SAU at whole and lease back office space for us. So we would remain on the top floor, we'd sell the building, and we would lease the top floor to stay there. Again, this would be a zoning implications as well. And finally, the option would be to close the SAU and find rent space in keeping the building as an asset. Once we receive the proposals and options, more information will be brought forth. This week, we were approached by the city, and they would like to have a meeting with Tim and I on Monday about our land where the Dana House is. So there is some movement within the Dana House, and I think they were going to come to a proposal of potentially swapping that land with us. So we have land out back of the SAU, which our garages live on, we don't own that land, the city does, and where the Dana House is, is our land. So we are going to take that meeting, and we will bring any more information forward to you folks after that. Any questions on goal one? All right, goal two: Study enrollment housing development to inform fiscal and curricular decision-making. Our SAU team presented enrollment study to the school board on March 5th, 2025. The city district task force will continue to discuss housing. A current school board member is assigned to the Lebanon Housing Committee, and the school and district teams will review enrollment reports during the budget season. So we're starting to look at those and making decisions towards the following year. Any questions on enrollment study? All right, goal three: Explore options for and data around surrounding moving back and changing school start times. A school, sorry, a school start time committee has been established, it has met two times already, it has representation of all invested audience, including students from Lebanon, Plainfield, Grantham, and Cornish. The committee has agreed that the research is conclusive, conclusive, that later start times will benefit our middle and high school students. So our next steps include meet with our area partners, included Hartford Career and Technical Center, we're being, including them all in our fall meeting. We're identifying potential obstacles, and if there is a cost, a cost proposal will be included in there. So in our meeting with our area agreement, we did let them know, and they were aware of our committee, as they will need to make changes to their schedule if we make changes to ours due to busing. Any questions on goal three? Karen, do we have a date for the fall meeting yet?
No, it's broadly September, and we're working to fill out the dates.
Thank you. Goal four was to examine the elementary schools through equity enrollment lenses. So our progress is that we have aligned class sizes at both elementary schools. Our principals do budget planning together, we're aligning priorities. Next year, there's an intentional coordination of student experiences for all grades K to four. This year, we worked through the PTO, and we found that fourth grade celebration wasn't happening at Hannover Street as it was at Mount Leb, so Hannover Street did include a fourth grade celebration, and Hannover Street had a kindergarten celebration, and Mount Leb did not, and then we adjusted that, so Mount Leb also had a kindergarten registration. There's ongoing curriculum alignment, and then the next step, probably in September of 2025, I will present the feasibility of realigning the elementary configuration as a potential cost-saving measure. So in our previous board has come up, is, would there be a cost-saving measure if one of the schools became a pre-K to one or a pre-K to two, and the other one a three to four? So that will be completed and presented to this board, as I said, in September 2025, prior to full budget season. All right, goal five: Support innovative partnerships for non-traditional curricular opportunities. Our TakeFlight partnership is moving into year two, we will be having two plane bills going on at the same time. The middle school is creating an exploratory class for aeronautical exploration, and we've started to have our elementary classes start to visit the hangar. We've added to the course of studies to the high school, 835 ski building course. This course is intended for students who are passionate about alpining skiing and want to take their interest to a higher level by designing and building a set of custom skis. By the end of the semester, students will have a functional set of skis. We're excited for that course. We've expanded project-based learning for reward and authentic learning experiences. The middle school did community projects, and we have additional professional learning opportunities in K to 12, starting this summer. Our high school STEM program, it used to be Hypotherm in Fuji, we've expanded now to other partnerships, including Dartmouth Medical. And then during the 25-26 school year, selected faculty will attend design thinking workshops with Dartmouth undergrad to explore innovative strategies with our English language learners. And then the fall of '25, a small cohort of leaders from the district will attend the LIFTED conference, which is the Leadership Institute for Transformative Education. We will learn about models of innovation and systems of excellence, and learn from experts in the field on how to lead and advance this work in our community. Any questions on that fifth goal of the district? Before I go on to the school board goals, I just want to thank the entire district and the staff for working on those. We've accomplished a lot this year towards those goals, so I wanted to shout out to all of them that have been working on these, for this, and continuing to have these meetings as we move this forward. So the school board goals, and I know next Monday, we will be starting to develop our new goals for next year. We had two this year, was to increase legislative involvement at the state level. So we've had a very busy, busy legislative season as it continues, so I want to thank the board for continuing that work, and I would imagine that this goal may carry over to the following year. And finally, the other goal was, sorry, participate actively in creating, revising, implementing, and continuously monitoring strategic plan process, as well as the strategic plan itself. So tonight, you have the strategic plan in front of you, which we hope that we will be able to adopt and move forward to get into the implementation stage and communication stage. That is my presentation for the district goals and board goals of '24-25.
Does anybody have any questions or comments, superintendent, about the goals?
So I did want to thank you for this, and I thank the district as well for the progress. It's really helpful to see the steps that have been taken. I think I had one question, which was on the SAU, and will there at some point be an SAU building task force?
There will be, we just have met kind of as our internal team and with the Realtor once we get that data back, and then knowing that we have to reach out to our city partners and you folks to kind of guide that next step. So as soon as we get that information, we will share that.
And I just wanted to share with the board, I met today with a group of school board chairs from across the state who are attempting to get a meeting with the governor in advance of the budget signing, really to talk in a nonpartisan way about the ways in which specific policies will affect our individual districts, because it's a bunch of different districts from rural to urban and all over the place. And so I just wanted to let you know that that's happening. When we have more information, I'll, I'm going to have more information, I'll let you know, because we, right now, we're just asking, we don't know if she's actually going to meet with us or not. But whatever I say will represent the things that we've already agreed to say as a board. But the strength of that, we thought, was to sort of put a face to some of these things. It's easy to say, open enrollment will be a problem, when you're in a meeting with this, the chair of Mascoma, his response was, open enrollment will actually kill us. And it's, it's much, it's a good idea to put a face to the things and to have someone say, well, in what ways is that really going to damage your particular district? So that's the hope going forward, is that we'll be a resource. We'll see how that works.
All right, so a little bit more from me tonight. I have to share several important updates with you. So we have received a spring policy update from the New Hampshire School Board Association. This update includes revisions to 30 policies and over 40 rule reference changes that we will need to make. This is largely due to the adopted 306 standards. I'm going to work closely over the next weeks with school leaders to gather input and coordinate with our policy chair. Our goal is to present these policies for first reading at this board on August 13th, and second reading on August 20th, so they can be implemented for the school year. I believe you all received the updates from the School Board Association, you can kind of click in to see where those policy guidance stands. We are closely monitoring several legislative items that may have significantly impacts to our school operations. These include the governor's pending decision on the proposed cell phone ban. We do have a draft sort of in the works that we would bring forward to this committee. There is some pending language that we are waiting for in terms of the use of personal devices. It is unclear within her, that original bill, if they will be banned. After meeting with the high school today, we have several students that bring in personal devices for ELOs, for the graphic, they make graphic novels, they do a lot of design and art. We don't have that capability currently with our Chromebooks. The other piece is the camera pieces, so we do a lot of photography, so there is some unfunded mandates within this bill, and there is no fiscal note attached to that newest bill, so that is something that we're following. The parental, parental notification bill was signed to law by Governor Ayotte, so that will have some changes in practice for our educators. The elimination of income requirements for the school voucher program was also signed into law, so I know many people have, I guess, throughout the internet were saying they were signing up for that, so, which I think is estimated cost to taxpayers of $102 million. Several open enrollment bills are still under review, so we're waiting patiently to see if any of them will get moved through. We have, through our associations, continuing to reach out to our legislations, most recently on Senate Bill 210, and just talked about the timeliness of this open enrollment bill to start on July 1. And that particular language has us having to post our enrollments monthly, and that we would have to, we either could lose or gain students on a monthly basis. So I'm looking over to Tim, because I would think that would be a financial, maybe a financial challenge, so. Grant funding updates. While allocations have not appeared in our grant management system, we have received confirmation from the New Hampshire Department Ed that we will receive funding for Title I IDA special education, preschool special education, education, and most recently, we are going to be funded for adult education for next year, which is good news. Since we don't have these allocations in our grant management system, we cannot complete the application. That is actually due, I think, on June 30th, so they're putting a little time crunch on that. We are still patiently awaiting updates on the availability of Title II. On the way to this meeting tonight, I did speak to the Title II director, who is in contact with the Federal Department of Education today, and she left the meeting not knowing if there will be federal II funding coming to the district if and when. So she said, they are eager to have it as we are, but there's no indication that it's coming anytime soon, and it was not included in the president's budget. So as a reminder, Title II is for professional developments for teachers. We have not heard anything about Title III, which is our support for English language learners. Title IVA, I did email the director today, he does believe it's coming, but he does not know anything about our allocation. And Title V, Rural Education, we have not heard anything, if they're coming at all. Celebrations. This has been a season of celebration across the district, plenty of moving up ceremonies to end-of-year field days and performances. Our students and staff have many opportunities to come together in excitement and reflection. Our graduation ceremony on June 5th was warm, but it was a wonderful event, and I want to extend my sincere thanks to our students, faculty, and families for making it such a meaningful day. I've heard lots of great feedback from the community. Finally, I want to do a special thank you to John Kerber and his facilities team, who went above and beyond to ensure the event was well organized and that everyone arrived safely and comfortably. Thank you, John. As I close out the year, and my long report tonight, I wanted to take a moment to recognize several dedicated staff members who have reached significant milestones in their service to the Lebanon School District as they retire. Becca Boudreaux, 37 years, Timothy Winslow, 26 years, Amy Newlove, 23 years, Deb Laughin, 21 years, Louise Valier, 18 years, Diane Estes, 17 years, and Lori Edwards, 10 years. So congratulations to them, and I welcome the best on their retirement. And that officially ends my update for you guys tonight.
Any questions for Amy, her update?
I have one, Amy, kind of the, you mentioned the parental bill of rights, one. There's also going to be probably some training for staff around that one, and I wonder if it would be good for us to, in full transparency, publish somewhere, let our community members know what that training looks like, so that parents know the trainings that our teachers are getting. It just kind of prompted that maybe that's a good idea for all the things.
I think it would be a good thing to add on to our website, exactly what are the parental rights, and how do we respond. So we can work on that absolutely this summer, and get that up and communicated with.
Anything else?
Very good question about the SAU building and the Dana House. Who are you working with at the city regarding that swap?
Is it Cheryl Embry? Is it Cheryl Embry?
Catherine Embry?
Kathy, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so she asked for a meeting with us, just because we had toured the Dana House when we had our Realtor look. Just, they were wondering what that space was. And then I know they have a proposal, a couple of proposals to do something with that building, but that would require us to do that land exchange.
Yeah, yeah, okay, cool. I'll just send an email off to her as well as the two of you illustrating the way it's currently zoned. Way, it would preserve a lot of options if a strip of land on the, on the Semhel roadside remained with the main SAU building. Is then a rezoning CBD, Central Business District of the SAU building advantageous for selling it, not spot zoning it?
That would be great if you could send that information.
Thought I would include that.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. That moves us on to the business administrator update.
Good evening. I'm glad you're joining, joining us tonight on one of our six sunny days. We're inside. In your packet is through May, last time we went like halfway through May. So the expenditures or revenues only have a couple more weeks on it. And we'll go over those real, as well, as detailed as you want. But the big thing is the fund balance projection, because this drives conversations about year end list and stuff. So if the fund balance projection sheet that pulls from the expenditures, you see the first number says 2.408395. That's through March, through May, how much money we have left we have not expended. So what these, the next four lines are just conservative sort of holdbacks that I like to do in case something comes up that auditors or whatever. So out of that 2.4, you know, the number that I'm playing with on this presentation is $2,988,000. So withholding some money for audit adjustments for special ed stuff that comes in that we never know about, especially for Vermont. We have $50,000 in food service to the, to the food service account from the general fund in our budget, but I think we're going to need about 100. That's why there's another 50 there. And the $80,000 is just, it just seems there's always expenditures that weren't NPOs. Okay, so then you add in surplus revenues from the revenue sheet. We do not have any surplus revenues this year. Right now, the revenue sheet, so we're about $58,000 behind, which is pretty good. We're usually over, but we're not this year. We'll over some of those reasons in a minute. And I wanted to point out the retained fund balance. We talk a lot, well, you, people new to the board haven't heard it yet, but we have this 2.5% holdback. It's called the retained fund balance. So the voters of Lebanon gave the board the ability to withhold 2.5% of the assessed, total assessments. And there's a calculation to give from DRA on how to do that. So we held back $958,000 last year. That, at the end of every June 30, that goes back in the pot when you do the numbers for the state. So that brings a total of $3 million, and we'll get to what we do that in a minute. So the warrant, when you did the budget, we said we'd have $1 million to offset taxes. There are two, there's two cap reserve funds that will be funded if there's money, which I'm saying there will be money, which brings that total remaining fund balance down to 1.4 million. Now, if you retain the maximum allowed amount, you'll see the maximum retained allowed amount for this year's DOE 25 that I filed will be 1,400,000. See, it goes up from 958 to 1 million because the assessment went up. So, and you don't have to retain the full 2.5%. That's, and we, generally, I retain everything I can up to 2.5%, is what I end up doing. Sometimes you talk about it, and honestly, sometimes, I've been trying to do better the last few years, specifically talking about it. But I retain everything we can after we do projects. So what I'm saying is that, on this estimate, you should be able to retain the full 1,400,000 and have $366,000 left for projects. In the middle of the box, the tentative list, we haven't gone over yet, but the list is $362,900. So all that to say is that if things go as I predict, then we'll be, and you guys support the projects, we will turn back 1,20967. That's in the last line before the total in the projection box, 1,20967. Hopefully, that's, that's what we want to do. And then the bottom box is just, as of May 31st, we still had $7 million in encumbrances, and 1.5 million of that was not personnel. So the rest of it is all wages. Any questions about that?
I have a question. When are you giving us the project list?
It's in the packet.
Okay, good.
It's for action here.
I missed it, sorry.
That's, that's why John's here. I'm like, you're coming, buddy.
I figured. I just wanted to make sure.
On the revenue side, I went over this two weeks ago. We are, we have a great amount of impact fees that, some of these numbers have changed. We got more impact fees than two weeks ago. We are down on tuition. And that's really, usually, we're pretty good on that. I just take everybody that I'm told is coming to us from our area schools, and we cost it out. And evidently, we got less people than they predicted a year and a half ago. But we got more regular tuition out of state. You see, we get $105,000 more than we budgeted. No, that's total, I'm sorry, 105,000. Yeah, because you budgeted nothing. I'm sorry. Earnings on investments, we budgeted $80,000, and we're probably going to have around 224. Again, these are, still got June to go, so I'm projecting based on what we've been getting. And that's, that's not interest. That's just interest on our checking account. Bar Harbor pays this interest. The other local revenue, I mentioned this last time, that's really an accounting thing. When you bring it, when you have a premium holiday with insurance, we put it on expenditures, and we offset it with a revenue. We budgeted for a premium holiday that was less than we thought, which means we didn't expend it, and we don't have the revenue. So it's pretty much offset. Special ed aid is $60,000 better. Medicaid is not doing so well at the moment. But we got some, a little bit of money in today, and I know they're working hard on trying to close the year strong. And we have a plan going forward for next year, most importantly. Anyway, 58,405 is a little low. So there's obviously, I'm not anticipating any revenue to make that fund balance higher. I don't have a lot more to say. Spentitures, those questions you had, it's really been pretty static.
Questions for Tim?
Tim, the 1.5 standing non-personal ELOs, where does that come last year at this time?
I'll tell you, it's similar, but that's not a very specific answer. It's not higher than, I can try to tighten that up.
That'd be great.
You have to speak. I can't see you. Just, there's too much sun.
Your future's so bright, you have to wear shades.
Tim, is one of the projects blind?
Yeah.
Can it be?
It should be. All right. Any other questions for Tim? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, that leaves, brings us to Karen, Director of Academic Engagement and Opportunity.
Welcome to my part of the slideshow-heavy evening. It's nice to see all of you. I have an update today on a number of fronts, including progress in our adoption of new curricular resources in K through 4 ELA, or English Language Arts. Some positive news to share there, and a plan for moving forward into next year. I'll also provide a brief overview of summer learning opportunities that our teachers are going to be pursuing, and curriculum work, as well as a quick overview of how we'll spend our in-service days next week after the students are off for the summer. There we go. Do you want me to do my own clicking there, Tyler? I don't have to, but I'm, I'm so excited. Let's see if I can. Look at that. For those of you who are new to the board, others have seen this before, just as a reminder about how we began this trajectory nearly three years ago, we were responding to faculty input, parent input, and student assessment data, indicating that we needed to upgrade our ELA resource materials for our curriculum in our elementary schools. In addition, there's a piece of legislature that came through our state requiring such an update. It's broken down into two parts. Broadly speaking, we think of language arts instruction at the elementary level in two buckets. Foundational skills, which is to oversimplify sort of reading the words on the page, what words are there. And then listening and reading comprehension, which is our knowledge building and comprehension component. This graphic depicts the four main parts of a comprehensive program. We've tackled three of them in a really robust way. I'm excited to share an update about that and bring forth the fourth quadrant. Beginning in the 2223 school year, our educators began robust professional learning. This included all of the things you list there. Because it's been a long night, I'm not going to read the slide to you. Just going to move right along. We also then, beginning this year, implemented across the district, a new foundational skills program. Again, that's for, includes phonics and word recognition. And we introduced improved screening and progress monitoring strategies. Our fourth domain is knowledge building curriculum, and we've been engaged in a pilot of two programs this year. So first, what have we implemented this year? Our foundational skills program has met with success so far. And I want to deliver this news with a big smile, but a healthy caveat. We look for, to track progress when we introduce a new curriculum resource over several years. However, I do want to share early indicators of success so far. The teacher feedback, particularly on our UFLI program, which is the foundational skills program pre-K through 2, is really positive. Teachers love it. They notice dramatic progress with their students. And we pair this with decodable texts that we onboarded in all classrooms, really seeing lots of improvement from the boots-on-the-ground teacher feedback. We do find in our third and fourth graders that in their foundational skill work, understandably, there's some need for reteaching and review because they did not have access to that UFLI curriculum across the district in their K through 2 years, but our educators are providing that. We're excited to be able to extend this bellography program to the middle school in fifth grade as a pilot for next year. This depicts some of our new screening product scores. So we're using a product called the Dibbles, which is a screening tool administered through an Amplify digital format. What you really want to be looking at here are the little stars. Those delineate. Students who are in the blue and green bars are at or above the standard for that time in the year for their grade level. So in other words, they're meeting at grade level standards. Red and yellow are not yet. So what we want to see is between the middle, beginning of the year, BOY is not for boy, it's beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year, we want to see steadily declining bars of red and yellow, and steadily increasing bars of green and blue. And as you can see, these cohorts are really making steady progress exactly as we'd hoped to see. And this is grades three and four. Progress is a little more uneven with our fourth graders. But again, they're in need of some reteaching and robust instruction. So this is an early indicator of success. We were very pleased with these results this year. In addition, this actually isn't in your packet. So if you're looking at your packet, maybe turn your attention up to the screen. We found some wonderful student work examples that really bring this to light. So one of the best ways to look at student literacy is to look at their writing in K1 and 2. So this is a sample of kindergartner writing from the beginning of the year this year. Following our robust UFLI instruction, this student produced clear improvement in letter formation. Those look like words. Really, a lot of progress there. And then this student, at the beginning of the year, moved up to writing words that look like they're definitely meeting the standard that we would expect for kindergarten. This student began here, and their final end-of-year writing sample just went on and on and on, and required additional pages. This is a different measure. This is not our screening product. Amplify, Dibbles measures just those foundational skills. Our NWEA measures three times a year, an integrated approach to reading. And one of the things we look at here is a growth metric. Student growth percentile is one of those things that we track closely, because it shows not just how many students are meeting the benchmark, but student growth over time. Now, these are different cohorts. This is not organized in a cohort manner, but by grade level, you can see progress. And if you organized it by cohort, you can also see progress within the individual cohorts. Not as dramatic, but again, we're going to look for that student growth percentile to continue to improve over the years ahead. And really, we want to see 50th percentile or higher. So that brings me to the fourth quadrant. Now that we've tackled foundational skills, robust professional learning, and better metrics for student progress monitoring, we need to implement an equally robust knowledge building and language comprehension curriculum, curricular resource, excuse me. You'll recall that we began with a pilot of the Fish Tank Program this fall. It didn't go as we'd hoped. While the program had some positive aspects to it, and thankfully, was quite low cost. Most of the cost was devoted to purchasing high-quality children's literature, which we can continue to benefit from. Our educators, educator feedback reflected that it had weaknesses in areas, particularly writing instruction, and was uneven in its vocabulary and knowledge building components. So we moved on to arts and letters, which is, many people have heard of the wit and wisdom program. It's used nationwide. It's sort of a big player in this field. Arts and letters is the newly revised version of that curriculum from the same producer, same publishing company that produces our math program that yielded quite positive results for us. So arts and letters is revised to include higher rigor writing and a more realistic approach to the balance of time that teachers have for instructional practice during the day. Again, I'm not going to read all these slides to you, but it's aligned with the so-called science of reading. As a reminder, that's a robust body of research reflecting what we know about how students learn to read and write. It's a component, it has a component called geodes, which is readable, decodable texts, readable and decodable texts. So it provides a nice bundling with our UFLI materials to create a wraparound approach to skilled reading. Some of the things that we particularly like about it are the structured approach to writing. The painted essay is an approach that's been around, and actually originated, I believe, with the Vermont Writers Workshop about 15 years ago. And it's, it's really scaffolds learning for students in a meaningful way. Once again, brought some student writing samples. They show students an on-target model for each assignment, help them identify the component parts. And here, the student's working to write several linked fluid paragraphs that are really quite brief. And then the student is practicing using that color coding to emulate the model. So this is a third grader. In addition, there is explicit instruction around speaking and listening standards, something that's missing for many ELA curricula. The teachers who have been piloting this program spoke about the supportive scaffolding tools. There's a research and inquiry trajectory that has nice overlap with social studies in particular. And this is not in your packet, but we asked for feedback as late as we could, and actually just got it over the weekend so that our pilot teachers could have as long as possible with the program. Overall, it was positive, more positive than with the Fish Tank Program. Teachers praised the engaging content, the strong integration of reading and writing, clear routines. One of the things we look for in these products is a roadmap for novice teachers. When we welcome someone new to the district, we want to be able to hand them something that could be their entire playbook if they need that support in their initial years in the district. And this really provides that, much like our math program does. There's also opportunities embedded for student-led learning experiences, dovetails nicely with our inquiry focus at the district level, sort of across the board, K-12. There were a few concerns. No program is perfect. Usability of the online component was the biggest one. Thankfully, the publisher is launching a whole new website, which we have been told will improve this key aspect of, of the usability for our educators. There was a little bit of mixed feedback. One One grade level in particular didn't love the first unit of the program. We're going to work in collaboration with those teachers to help them make strategic decisions as a group. Thankfully, they're all very experienced teachers. And there was a good amount of feedback around support and questions. So we've been proactive in arranging coaching sessions where we're going to leverage some of our Title II funds from last year to bring out coaches from the company to provide demonstration lessons to our educators should we move forward with this in the fall, as we hope to. This is an overview of our cost projections. As you can see, the biggest upfront cost would continue through next year. This is a high-side estimate because we do have some materials on hand from the pilot. Excuse me. Our year-over-year estimates will obviously increase as pricing increases, but that's the subscription rate for the online component and student workbook materials that are consumable. This fits well within our budget for this ELA upgrade for next year. Should there be excess funds? We've actually heard from our fifth grade teaching team, the new humanities integrated approach to fifth grade would like to pilot one module next year to see if they might begin to move in this direction as well, which is hopeful in creating consistency for the Lebanon students. And just to put this in context, the upfront costs for the last big purchase of a curriculum were around $250,000. So this is considerably less than that, even with the false start with Fish Tank last year. We're not approaching the cost of the last time we engaged in this. I'm going to pause there in case folks have questions. Yes?
So thank you for this. It's a great update. I think that as a parent of two kindergarten students, the UFLY stuff was really great. And it was, came home and it was clear and it was easy to engage with the kids on, and they talked about it. And like, it was, I had one kid who did like a big, strong improvement using the materials, so that was great. I'm curious about, to be honest, and again, having two kids in different kindergarten classes, there was clearly different implementation of different programs or different aspects, different teachers do different things differently, that's fine. But I'm curious if you can help me understand what material that they would have been doing was Fish Tank? And what was arts and, and was there any arts and letters? Were we just piloting that? I'm a little confused about like-
Great question. Virtually all of the kindergarten teachers began the year with Fish Tank. When that, when the decision was made to pursue a second pilot at mid-year, we gave teachers an option to participate in the new pilot or continue with their instruction as, as they were. We don't want educators who don't have the bandwidth to engage in a mid-year pivot, to feel pressure to do so. That's not going to work out well for our students. And again, there was nothing wrong with Fish Tank. It was not what we'd hoped it would be, but it wasn't doing any damage to children. So some teachers began, continued with Fish Tank and others implemented this pilot. Thankfully, we did have pilot teachers at every grade level enough so that we feel confident that we got a good look at the program. I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head which teachers your child, which would have been which based on that experience.
No, sorry. I'm, I think I'm asking more about like what kinds of materials would, like the UFLY was, you know, and I'm looking at the other people who have kindergartners, like UFLY was real clear. Like it would come home and it like says "UFLY" on it, and they talk about UFLY time. And like, it was very clear, the material that they were doing and what they were getting out of it. I'm just trying to under, like, put a-
I think that the-
Like an activity they would have been talking about-
Home materials was a, a, the lack of robust home materials was a critique of the initial program. And we're hopeful that much, that that component will feel more robust. That said, at the kindergarten and first grade level, I wouldn't expect homework to go home in the knowledge building, language building curriculum as often as it does in the foundational skills curriculum. The proportion of time, if this is how much time we have in a kindergartner's day, we would expect this much of it to be foundational skills and this much to be knowledge building. And that divide sort of moves as children become more able with the foundational skills than we spend more time on knowledge building and comprehension. So by third or fourth grade, the proportion of time spent on foundational skills is relatively less and quite a bit more is spent on comprehension skills. So you may never see very much coming home from the, at a kindergarten level from the knowledge and language, knowledge building and language comprehension side of things. It's a smaller percentage of their day.
It's more the stuff that's happening in the classroom.
And really, at that age, we're reading the texts aloud to them-
Okay.
-to engage in that because their comprehension level isn't aligned to their decoding skills.
Okay.
So anything we sent home would really be homework for you to read.
And the, I think in terms of the, like, the other thing that was happening alongside the UFLY was the like 100-book challenge, which, and then also like kids being sent home with the decodable texts. I assume that was, like, kids being sent home with books and stuff, which is, am I correct that I'm correctly associating that with when you were talking about the improved-
You are. In some of the slides, I was trying not to read to you, although I ended up taking plenty of your time. Anyway, the foundational skills block does include a really robust flooding of the classroom with decodable texts, and those should continue to come.
It was very noticeable. I feel like it was very, like, we, I feel like there was a lot of success with that. The kids really enjoyed it. Like, it seemed very successful, so yay.
That's another big part of what's already in place. Thanks for the yay. I'm glad to hear that.
Another kindergarten mom, also yay. My kid did not read, and now she does.
That's exciting.
Right. Yeah, I, I really, I really think that it does seem like very teacher-supported. All of us parents really seem to notice these kind of leaps that we're talking about in our students' abilities, so that was great. I'm kind of, I guess, wondering about the kind of subscription prices and pricing, just to kind of keep that in mind. It sounds like with arts and letters, it's having found a trusted company, since they are also kind of tied to the math program and all of that. Have they, I suppose, given any promises? Or is it much more of a like technical issue that was the issue with the online materials? Because I assume that's what's going into the yearly subscription chain.
Yeah. That's, some of you who have been on the board for a while remember this story from the math program. Great Minds is a big publishing company, and they're no dummies, so they figured out that they can tether the print materials that students use. In this case, there's sort of a workbook that students use, particularly in grades one through, through five. They tether the purchase of that to the digital subscription, allowing access to the online materials. So you could decide in our math program, or in this program, I no longer need to purchase that student workbook. And that company would say, has said to us in regards to the math book, great, we won't send it to you, but it's a bundled price. We're going to charge you on a per pupil basis to purchase any part of our program. So in other words, for whatever they price it at, $5.95 a student, you get the print materials and the digital, and you cannot decide just to purchase one or the other. They're happy to not deliver the thing to you, but they're going to charge you $5.95 per student.
This is something that several other companies across different fields have been tricking into, so I guess that's the lot. So I guess we'll just stay tuned if they have hopefully improved that online access for our teachers for next year.
Yep. I'm not sure what else to say.
Any other questions for Karen?
John, you look like you have a question. No? Oh, sorry. I thought I was reading. All right.
Sorry, I do just have one last question. Do you have, do you have any sense of the cost of UFLY? I can't remember.
UFLY's remarkably low cost. It's all that you do is purchase a single teacher's manual for the teacher. And then it's like microscopic, so you also buy that teacher a really great pair of reading glasses. Just kidding. And then they produce the materials, or they use flexible materials that they already have to deliver the instruction. So they're not a company, they really philosophically remain committed to making their materials accessible to districts regardless of the district's budget capacity. I'm not aware of any robust knowledge and building program that has that pricing model,
Yay. Cheap and good. Wonderful.
Can you repeat the name of the arts and letters and math company?
It's, so it's Great Minds.
Great Minds, thank you.
And we purchase Eureka Math Squared, or EM2. And this program is arts and letters. And it's associated with wit and wisdom. And they have an add-on product, which is included here because our teachers have found it very high value, which is called geodes. That's a readable batch of books that augments the decodables and dovetails with the themes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got two more quick slides, and I'm going to keep it so quick. Summer professional learning, lots of things are happening. There they are. I'm happy to answer questions about them. And we're moving forward with summer curriculum work in a couple of different areas. ASH is American Studies, Honors, and that's an abbreviation I shouldn't have used on a slide. Not all would understand that, especially parents of kindergartners. And the PLDC is the Professional Learning Development Committee. Lots of work, particularly at the middle school, we're funding support for teachers to make sure that they're ready to go with any adjustments that the new schedule has caused. And finally, our June professional days, we have three days. Teachers spend one Wednesday without scheduled formal meetings, using that time to wrap up the year as they need to. But on Monday, we will have training in the professional development tracking tool that pairs with the educator effectiveness tool, which I spoke to you about in March. It's just a user-friendly tracking tool that replaces the least popular product in use in our district. Hopefully, it'll go well, and teachers will feel a lighter burden tracking their professional development. We'll have lots of cross-district meetings Tuesday. Our elementary school teams, both buildings, are doing responsive classroom training. That's a social-emotional learning program that they hope to implement in the fall. And curriculum work at the middle and high school throughout the day.
Can you talk just for a minute about what you mean by ASH alignment?
They're the teachers that teach different sections, wanted to have time together, and for a variety of reasons are on different committees on Monday and Tuesday and don't have time to do that during our in-service days. So that's the kind of project that we like to support because they, alignment between different sections is really pretty critical at the high school. We want to make sure students are having a unified experience as much as possible regardless of their teacher.
It's just for the honors sections, or it's for the, all the American Studies sections?
My understanding is it's just American Studies, Honors, but I can circle back as to, I actually-
Does the same teachers teach both of those? So it'd be interesting to see if they were aligned for American Studies, but not for American Studies, Honors, or vice versa.
That's a great question I should ask. Thank you.
Other questions for Karen? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to update on the LMS schedule.
And because I'm sure you're sick of hearing from me, I'm going to ask Tom to come up.
I know, we don't have a slide, but I did print out two papers for you. One of them with the schedule, and then another little document with a time clock.
Good evening. I'd like to update you briefly on the Lebanon Middle School scheduling changes. Since our last communication, I've received lots of positive feedback from staff, students, and families. In response to ongoing questions and interest, we have updated our website to include the new schedule, which I've also provided to you, as Dr. Allen just indicated, this evening for comparison with our current schedule. So our, you can see our current schedule's there on the left, and our schedule for next year's on the right. One of the driving forces behind this change was a significant increase in instructional time. Students will now benefit from over 7,000 additional instructional minutes over the course of the year. This expanded time allows for greater flexibility, deeper learning opportunities, and enhanced enrichment activities. These changes directly result from the feedback we collected from students, staff, and families throughout this process. While students will continue to have access to the same variety of elective options as this year, or essential arts options as we call them, our teachers have been working diligently to enhance engagement and improve learning experiences in those classes. One notable change is that financial literacy will not run this year, as it was only offered to seventh and eighth grade students. However, in anticipation of the revised ED 306 standards, we are introducing computer science courses to meet evolving expectations. This summer, we will post on our website a summary of the scheduling committee's work, including a data synthesis, so that families can understand the data-informed decision-making that was informing these changes. Looking ahead, we will bring forward our updated program of studies and student handbook in the fall, following a review by the policy committee and aligning with recommendations from the New Hampshire School Boards Association related to the 306s and any current legislation. As we all know, there's no perfect schedule, but I'm proud, I am proud of the thoughtful work of our scheduling committee. We'll continue seeking feedback and making necessary adjustments to best support our students and staff. In the meantime, our scheduling team is actively building student schedules. I'm continuing to meet with staff to address questions or concerns, and we are planning professional development to support staff in making the most of this increased instructional time. Thank you.
Tom, does anybody have any questions for Tom?
Yes.
I have one. My child talks a lot about LMS block, doing her homework, and her friends do well. I don't see that anywhere, so I'm wondering how might the homework philosophy change at the middle school moving forward?
Our hope is to work with our teachers to use that, so we are moving from 42-minute instructional periods to 50-minute instructional periods, to get more of the work done during those class times, so that there will be less homework. We have not had the in-depth conversations that would be needed to overhaul the philosophy of homework overall, but we're hoping to work with the teachers, help the teachers to help the students to get more accomplished in class, to reduce the amount of homework that needs to be done outside of school.
And one of the 306 policy updates will be homework, so that is on our docket to look at. There is a new change to homework requirements and philosophy that will need to come to this board.
Do you have a follow-up? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I've heard that one a lot, so I'm ready for that response.
Anybody else have any other questions?
There was one over here.
Oh, sorry.
Is there any concern with the 7:30 to noon without any kind of a break?
Well, so each student will get an E, what do you mean by a break? Like, we have like the 10-minute break built in on our, on the left side. Yeah, there's concern, and part of the scheduling committee work, we talked about that quite a bit. And instructional minutes were one of the big, big priorities that we needed to get out of this. That was 10 minutes out of the day. We are going to build in at the beginning of third period, don't know exactly, the beginning, I think the start of either, I think the start of second period, we're going to call it, it's working snack. So we're going to, it's going to take some training. Like, right now, our students come in in the morning, and a lot of them have breakfast. And then at nine o'clock, a lot of them come down and get a snack and bring, and either eat in here or go back to their advisories and eat it, or just anywhere but the hallway, basically, is what we angle for. Next year, we're going to give them, we're going to need to coach them, but it's going to be come in the morning, if you want a snack, get it now. And then we're going to have a working snack is what it's going to be. So for the first 10 minutes, it must be period two, 8:44. Students will be, I mean, students eat in classes often anyway, when teacher, you know, when they're hungry, teachers let them eat. But that's like a dedicated time where teachers will be giving, you know, initial instructions for the day, or whatever they're, whatever it is, it's time to give the students a chance to eat something.
One of the things, when I had observing in the classrooms here, the teachers really implement brain-based learning and brain-based activities. So oftentimes, they're not just sitting and getting, they're up and moving around-
Oh, yeah.
-and things like that. And one of the things that Principal Harkins really fought for was to keep recess, which I come in and for, such an important part of the middle school experience.
Jessica?
I was just curious about how, if there's any, I know that we, we talked a little bit about the possible start time change and how this might inter, like, I'm just curious if you would be thinking about-
It wouldn't start this year, so-
Yeah, but I mean, is there any, I mean, I guess there's no way of knowing. It just feels like, is, I don't know, I'm not a middle school parent. This seems like it's a big change that has like generated certainly a lot of feedback, much of a positive, but I think a lot of angst possibly.
Sure.
And just thinking of, I'm sure that there's conversations with the committee that's working on the start time about like how, the possibility of multiple years of schedule changes, just thinking about that.
I mean, I think in, in-
I mean, I think in, in, when we're talking about start times, it's sort of moving the whole day, right? So you're not, you're not changing the, the structure of the day, but you're changing, like, it starts at eight as opposed to 7:30 or whatever. Yes, there are gonna be, I mean, I think we'll have to, that committee's gonna have to talk about that for sure, because there will be schedule changes no matter what. But we don't know if that's actually gonna happen yet, so we have to wait and see.
I just had a follow-up. Amy, you used the word that Principal Harkins had to fight to keep recess. Could you elaborate on that? Do we have a lot of...
Well, I think there was times in there when we talked about instructional minutes, like, should we take recess? So I think he was like absolutely part of the social-emotional support for, for our middle school, so it's to keep it. And he recognizes the value of that with the people. So as you know, with survey...
It was a discussion, it was a professional discussion.
Professional.
I would just hope our educators in our district, middle school, understand the importance.
I, yes, it was a robust, varied committee of different stakeholders, so, yes.
Yes. I mean, I think when I came to the Lebanon School District, I was excited to see recess embedded in middle schools. Doesn't always happen in five to eight schools around the state. And I think it's one of, one of the best things that we have and continue to do is to support that social-emotional learning during this middle school time.
Any other questions for Principal Harkins? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I don't know why I turned that off. All right, we are going on to unfinished business. We have a second reading of just one policy, IJOA, Field Trips and Excursions. Richard, do you wanna bring us up to speed?
Yeah, I'm not sure how this slipped past us. We did give the R1, 2, and 3 forms that go with this a second reading.
We just forgot.
Somehow, we didn't give the policy itself a second reading.
All right.
So I move that we pass IJOA, pass its second reading into our policy vote. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Richard, second by John. Any questions? I've seen this before. All right, oh, Leila?
This is what we have seen before, but we missed voting.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just accidentally didn't vote.
Yeah, I think it was the first read in April and then someone had asked me about going over, on a day trip to Montreal. And I was like, I have a policy. And then I'm like, where's our policy? Ash and I went back through and found that we didn't send it to second read, so.
Sorry, guys.
It's okay. It's one policy. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Great, unanimous, excellent. All right, that brings us to discussion and action on the strategic plan, which you have the full text of that earlier in your packet. It starts with this little graphic, if that helps. So, questions? Have Katie here with us too, from the consulting firm, if we have specific questions that Amy and I can't answer. But does anyone have any questions or comments or observations they'd like to share, having seen the revised draft?
I mean, aside from what I shared with you, no.
Yes, there, it's missing a bibliography. It has references, but not a bibliography. There will be a bibliography. It is there, it is just not in this version.
I was like, oh, this looks like a good reading list. I should probably go and, oh.
I think we had it in last time's presentation.
Yeah, it was in the last, it hasn't changed, but it will be added to this, well, final draft.
We had more experience with design, colors, and planning the last couple of weeks, so.
Nope. Nope. Okay, so I need a motion. By somebody.
Are we, are we accepting the strategic plan?
Yeah.
I move that we accept the 2025 to 2028 strategic plan.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Richard, second by Leila. Any additional questions, Karen's? No. All right, all those in favor? Great, and I want to thank all the members of the community planning group, which were many, and they did a lot of really important work. I want to thank the consulting firm as well. They did excellent job guiding us through. We were a lot fractious at times, that was helpful. And I want to thank Amy's and her team, because they also put in a lot of time and effort to do this. Just wanted to mention on the community planning group members, Joe is on this, and he is listed as a community member slash parent, not as a board member, because he joined as a community member slash parent, and then he got elected to be a board member. So we did it under what he was originally, because that's who he was supposed to represent originally. So just wanted to clarify, we just didn't forget that he was a board member. We just decided to go with what he was originally. So just thank you to all those people for their work, and I look forward to a lot more work to come in the district.
And a thank you to our chair, who I know has been putting a lot of work in as well on this particular project, so.
All right, great. You all, let's move on to...
Thank you, Katie.
Yes, thank you to Katie. Move on to discussion and action on the LA curriculum resource purchase. So we had Karen's presentation, and our, we need a motion to accept arts and letters as our curriculum resource.
I'll move.
Oh, all right, Jessica is making the motion.
I'll second.
All right, John seconds. Do we have any additional questions for Karen about the resource? All right, all those in favor? Great, unanimous. All right, back to policies.
Okay, we have new policies to deal with. First readings of DJE, bidding requirements, EIB liability insurance, IHA, physical education credit for school-affiliated sports, and FBC, efficiency and sustainability of school operations. Does anyone have any questions about any of these policies?
Does anybody want to take any of them out of the group that wants to talk specifically about any of them in detail? Or if you don't, if you have any sort of informational questions, we can do those right now.
Mine is on IHAE, and I don't know if it's a big deal or not.
Let's find out.
My question is, we, we are specific to at the junior varsity and varsity levels, and my question is, why not reserve? Because I feel like our children should be getting the same sort of coaching that they would be at the junior varsity and varsity levels, and they are competing. So why would we leave those children out?
That was a recommendation from the LHS administration and athletic director, citing that the reserve teams do not have the amount of practice level and amount of games that are played throughout the season. So that was one of the requests that they suggested to the policy. They may practice two days a week, three days a week versus some of these JV and varsities are practicing every day for longer periods of times. They might have eight games versus 17 games for that, too. One of the things that I spoke to Chair Lord Burley, I did, when I was speaking to the high school with this, and knowing that the 306s are coming, we do need a procedure for this, about how to do this. So I would suggest when we make an amendment, this, so this would not go into play into the 26, 27 school year, so I can bring those procedures before it goes into implementation.
I guess I would say I have a hard time telling a student who's on a reserve team, we want our, my philosophy, or our philosophy, I believe, is we want our kids to participate. So I don't think we should exclude our reserve athlete, because it's likely they're gonna play JV in a year or two anyway. That's just my philosophy.
I hate to disagree with a very compassionate, overall, student-centered philosophy when that's what we're here to do. But I can hear the kind of request from the athletic director that five days a week is different than two days a week, when the kind of trade-off is, the hope is that we're still getting our young people active and encouraging that level of still getting as many activity years would be my kind of two cents on the wording.
Would it be worthwhile to try and award a quarter credit for the, that not, I mean, that wouldn't make any difference?
They don't do quarters, so it would...
No, okay.
And I think that's the other thing, too, is I was just gonna say, this is only a half credit, right? So the max that they can earn to sports is a half credit over the whole of the four years. So if they're gonna play JV later, for instance, they can still earn a half credit, doesn't preclude them from earning that going forward. But I mean, that's it.
I can also disclose that I was very happy that in Illinois, where I grew up, it was a requirement to always have the kind of athletic year. So I will also kind of lean on a more conservative, more physical activity time.
Any additional questions on any of the other policies?
Sorry, just to clarify, with the idea with IHAE that it would not go into effect now?
Correct, it would go for the 26, 27 school year with the anticipation that I have those procedures completed by Lebanon High School Administration and Athletic Department to be approved by this board.
Would it be worth simply tabling this, then?
That's fine.
Rather than passing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna quickly move that we table policy IHAE, and, and we'll bring it back to the board when it's a more appropriate time. And we can have some discussions about it.
I think this will probably be a better conversation when we get to look at those 306 requirements and the graduation requirements, and kind of look at that whole student experience and where we can fill in and kind of supplement in making sure that our students are still exposed to all these different learning experiences.
We have a motion to table.
I'll second.
Okay, second by John. All right, so all those in favor of tabling IHAE? Great. Any other questions about the other policies that are up for first read? All right, so you wanna...
So I move that we move policies DJE, EIB, and FBC forward to second reading.
What about JEA?
Those are for...
That's with John?
Those are for withdrawal.
Oh, sorry, it's on the other page.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
All right. So a motion by Richard. Get a second.
I'll second.
Tia seconds.
Tia second. Second by Tia. A little feisty second by Tia. All right. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor? Okay, great.
Okay, so concomitant with the passing of FBC, we are also gonna withdrawing FAB, FAB-R, and ECF. We will also, because we just passed last time, IJOA, three Rs, we need to withdraw the old R. And we've also decided to withdraw JEA, compulsory attendance age, because it is, in the best description of it, a single line that says, "Go look at the statutes." So there's no point in having that policy.
Plus, it doesn't give the age.
Well, exactly. The statute gives the age. So it literally just says, "For any questions regarding that age, go see this." It's like, well, then what's this point?
All right.
So we're withdrawing that.
Hold on, let's go. Motion by Richard, second by Tia. Jessica has a question.
I have a question. So the, so FAB and FABR are up for withdrawal?
Along with EC, along with ECF, yeah.
And I think that, my understanding of the reasoning for that was that they were being combined, FBC.
Yeah.
Given that we haven't passed FBC yet, is it...
We just did.
We just moved it to a second.
We just moved it to a second.
And these withdrawals are going to a second reading.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we do a second reading and withdrawal.
Yeah, we do. The second readings and withdrawals, yeah.
I had to go back in the files, too. I'm like, we do put them on a second.
I was like, okay, all right, well, then never mind. I was gonna say, is it premature to withdraw?
No, we do it every time.
Okay, got it, never mind. Great.
Good question. Good clarification.
The motion is for a first reading withdrawal.
First reading of withdrawal.
Perfect. All right, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? All right, it is a silly process, but...
We had two policies that were reviewed without any major changes, policy DIE, audits, and policy DA, fiscal management goals. They hadn't been looked at in a while, now they have been, no changes were made. I don't believe any action is necessary.
We just, we just accepted the, accept the report. You can make a move to accept.
Motion to accept the reviewed policy report.
Okay, motion by Richard, second by Tia. Any questions about those? All right, all those in favor? Great, unanimous, okay. Excellent. And here we are at the end of your project list that I asked about prematurely.
Hey, John, would you like to join us up here to table? I'm not gonna let him sit back there and, like, Danny, you should just spark things from the past. So the list, John and I have been working on this list for a few months. We brought it to finance facilities and they made some changes. Actually, I had to ask for an addition. And we'll go into as much detail, or as little detail as you want. Two things I would like to say. One, we traditionally, the motion that we'd like to have is a motion that funds, whatever list you come up with, funds it in order of priority. We listed them. What that mean, what that would allow me to do is that if my estimates are way far off, then the things at the bottom of the list just don't get funded. That doesn't typically happen. Instead of just saying, do the whole list, I think giving the flexibility is good. The other thing is, it came up at finance facilities, it was a good question about this, the size of this list, dollar-wise versus other lists. I went back and did a 10, back to when I started. The average year-end list is 368,000, which, so this is a little less than that. And five of those 10, previous 10 years were significantly more than it. So there's only been, last year was the only time when we had an end-year list that was less than $100,000. But I say all that to say, I, I think we presented a list that is doable with the amount of money we think we're gonna have left, and also within historic limits of what we've passed before, so. And I can pass this to, I just did it the other day, so I didn't send it in. We had one year that was up as high as 900, almost 900,000, and the lowest was last year at 65,600.
Do you have it there? Can, do you mind res...
You want the dollar amounts?
I would have, at least for the last five years. I don't need the full, I appreciate, I appreciate this, and I just, it's helpful in my head. The last five years.
1920, 218, 700. 2021, 124, 6. 2122, 750,000. 2023 was 896, 100. Last year, 2324, 65, 6, and this year is 363, 9.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, so this list, we tried to put them together in an order that we think is priority, the priorities we'd like to see. There's a mixture of things from the cap reserve, I mean, the capital improvement plan and things that were reduced out of previous budgets. I tend to get my signals crossed on that. John is awesome, I remember, and finding that, he helps me with that, so. Top of the list, I had, so there's two buses in the budget, two leased, but that were already passed, already on order. We really need four. I mentioned during budget time that I'd like to put those two on this. We are, I am getting an alternate fuel quote. I already have a rough one for electric, but I'm gonna get a propane one and a gas one. I haven't gotten that yet. I meet with, I meet with them Thursday. So that, I have that at the top because we need, we need those buses. SAU gym floor was something that was talked about during budget time. I can't, I already forget if that was in the CIP or in the budget, but the SAU gym, this is what I remember the discussion, it was like, man, do we really need to do that? We think it's important, the gym. I actually walked the gym after that discussion, and not that my opinion matters more than anyone else's, but it's way rougher than I thought it was. So if we're gonna keep using that gym and, at being a community asset, it really needs to be protected. So we're doing the Hanover Street Gym this summer that was in the budget. And this is just like you would do your own floor at home, hand it down, bare wood, refinish it, and then a guy puts the lines out. The line part's the tough part, I think. They probably use lasers, who knows? But I don't wanna go one, each, each one, I would say, if you have any questions. I do want to point out the radio replacement. We have a chance to get some more Motorola radios with a violence prevention grant. We have to put in 25% of the grant, that's what the 19-5 is. So if we don't do that, then we take part of that grant. So that's the first fruits of our efforts with this, with Motorola. They have a division that helps you find grants and even helps you write, write grants. So we've been talking to them for like a year, and it's, hey, that'll actually work finally.[1776.34] So, that's what that's for. Some exterior cameras, you'll probably see this over and over, but we noticed there's a dead spot behind the high school, honestly, right, kind of over by where the propane tanks are. There's a picnic table out there now, too, so we think there needs to be a camera there. Came up because someone slipped, couldn't, I didn't have a worker's comp camera, but it makes sense. Nets for heater road, someone noticed that we have a, we have a net along the softball field on the one road, but we don't have one on, am I talking about the right field? Yeah, so the right, the first base side doesn't have a net, that's the right side, right? Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, here we go. It's actually the utility field and the cross field, yeah, those two there. The goal mouths on the far side get really destroyed every year, because they have to shoot
Oh, that's
away from heater road. And so, we'd save money, we wouldn't have to do as much turf repair if they used both sides as well, so. And it would be, you know, it's potential safety thing.
The alternative is to put a team member in the street and catch the staccowalls.
That is not an alternative.
That would be UTEM.
We are not doing that.
Special duty as a sign there, Tim.
On the second, second page, again, we're getting down nine and lower in our priorities. Course room flooring replacement, we had talked about that during budget time. This is an opportunity to get it done. Backstop replacement for the baseball field, that's a big number, but again, it wasn't a high enough priority to put it in the budget and fight fairly hard there, but it is, it's in really rough shape. And this is an opportunity to get it fixed. You can see that a couple of years ago, Remont Rec gave us a quote, but we decided not to act. The press box stairs and decking repairs, that was a, that was a CIP discussion. I think we renamed it. I think it just said stairs in the CIP in the first version were like $30,000 for stairs. So, this would, the press box, I know it seems like a little thing, but it's, the fire department doesn't like us using it the way it's constructed, so this would put it, make it, they've been nice to us on it. Parking lot design, this was added by the Finest Facilities for you to review, so we're doing a Hanover Street parking lot design already, that was part of the approved budget, that's between Hanover Street and the practice fields. This would be designed for the high school side, and it, it's just a design, it's not, they're not promising a new parking or anything, but if we're going to fix the parking lot, we need real design of drainage, boring stuff underneath you don't see. So, John got a quote from Pathways, it would probably be about 15,500. Actually, good timing, because we also are having ongoing talks about the parking situation at the high school, and this isn't a magic bullet for that either, but in case you didn't know, there's a bigger senior class next year, and there's issue, there's that construction going up. So, there's bigger issues about where everybody parks, and so we were thinking, well, maybe we can put in some, some hard pack on some of our land, but that kind of stuff needs to be reviewed for rainwater runoff and stuff. So, it's a good time to get this done, because if we're going to answer questions like that, we need to pay the money.
You're not on it.
And the last one, maintenance man replacement, this is, this is last on the list, it's in our CIP to be replaced in the next year or two, but if we can get it done now, you won't see it in the budget. So, there's a, you guys did approve a, a new truck with a dump body.
Liftgate.
Liftgate. So, we have, we have vans, too, and our vans are all pretty old. So, if this doesn't get done, because we don't have enough money, no harm, no foul, really, because we'll put it in a budget in future years. But it's, again, it's a good way to get ahead of things, that we don't have to fund in the future.
And speaking of the GMC Savannah specifically, I hear the Model 2026 year may come with a hybrid option, in case that's a possibility. That would be a nice thing if we're going to buy something with long lifespan.
I'm actually, that's, that's encouraging. I'm actually
You don't like the Savannah?
pretty pessimistic about, I mean, when we got a van last time for, you guys approved a van for food service slash transportation, we had a little white minivan, you wouldn't believe how long it took us, that's used. It took us months to find even a used one, and really hard to find these days, so maybe, maybe that's the answer, I don't know. I'm pretty, I'm pretty pessimistic that we'll find one, even if you approve it.
Okay, questions for Tim and John? I have one. When we were having these discussions about LMS and the changing of the classes, one of the things they mentioned was that the tech teacher had asked, or either the tech or the computer lab teacher, one of them had asked for more of those outlets, right? Is that in current budget, or is that, sorry?
So, the tech, the tech class, we have drops in the budget for 25, 26. The art teacher also asked for them. And so, item number four, electrical upgrades for art room and communication, so that includes those drops for the art room on the second floor. Also, the middle school has requested, and we've decided to split like strobe lights that'll go off in the wood shop in the gym when the phone rings. So, that'll, this will cover the electrical costs to get those set up, and then also a second circuit, because we recently added a new microwave, and they've been tripping when they both run.
So, the tech, the tech is already taken care of?
That's already funded.
Okay, great. That was my question.
I assume the installation of any strobes is going to come with like considerations of students that epilepsy and Yes, yeah, we talked to, yep, we're planning to have them like a very slow blink. Yeah, we, that did come up.
Awesome.
Any other questions for Tim? So, you, we want a motion to approve into your project list. Don't move. Okay, motion by Jessica, second by Leila. Any additional questions? Alright, all those in favor? Great. Alright, so, we have already, gee, so we need a discussion acknowledgement of $100 donation from Hopkinton High School to the LHS Take Flight program.
The Hopkin, Hopkinton High School in New Hampshire came to visit our Take Flight program, and to learn more about project-based learning and in kind, they sent us a thank you check for a $100 donation. So, I'd like to thank you for that, and that $100 will go towards when kids graduate high school, they get a cord, a Take Flight cord. So, we put that towards that in the budget.
Alright, so we want to thank Hopkinton for coming, and it's a thank you donation, and we wish them well in their efforts to do Take Flight. I'm assuming that's why they came. Alright, let's see, we'll return back to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Seeing none, is there any online?
There is none online.
Okay, committee updates. FNF's next meeting is August 18th at 4:30 at the SAU. Policy Committee met.
We met on June 2nd. We will be having, I think Amy and I will be meeting in July in preparation for a very long, all-day August meeting. As we have 30 policies.
Really 70 with, yeah, 40 reviewed, 30.
It's
It'll be a big packet.
We'll get, we'll, we'll figure out lunch, we'll do it.
Do we want to try to get a date in August? I just want to be mindful, is that we want to make sure we, that first board date, board meeting is August 11th and August 18th?
That's right, so it's going to need to be before August 11th.
We had already put one on for August 4th, I recall.
August 4th?
Yes.
Could I make the recommendation that we extend that meeting for those that are in the committee? People can stay as long as they can, as long as we have a quorum?
Okay.
I can take the whole day off.
Okay.
And Joe, we can send you, as soon as Rich and I have the draft policies, Richard and I will send them to the committee. We'll have them way before that, too.
Yeah, you guys will have a lot of time to prepare for this.
Okay, great, thank you. EC's next meeting, Education Committee's next meeting is September 11th at noon at the SAU. CNN met on June 9th. Did you elect a chair?
Yes. I'm the chair. We also have a great secretary in Ash, he takes wonderful notes. We talked about scheduling the reviews of job descriptions for the district, so that's something we talked about. We talked about when we would discuss the non-union personnel salaries and benefits before budgeting. We talked about the LSS negotiations and how to get organized for that. And we also looked at the hiring protocols for the district, the administrator hiring protocols, and discussed that, and we'll talk about that later. Our next meeting is on August 14th at 8:00 AM, and we are also going to have a meeting on September 10th before the board meeting to start the process with LSS.
And that will be here at 5:00. The 14th meeting will be virtual with our attorney, but the September meeting will be here right before the board meeting with LSS.
So, we're off and running.
Great, thank you. Alright, Student Wellness Advisory Committee meeting, the next meeting is to be, to be determined. HACTC met on May 29th, which I think we talked about, maybe not, it was right after our last meeting?
Yeah, we briefly
Okay.
the emergency meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Next meeting is Fall 2025. Area Committee's next meeting is October 21st, 2025. School District Consignment Task Force, we also met on May 29th.
I think we updated there, but that date, June 16th, that's incorrect, that's the Housing Task Force. So, we don't have a date yet for the task force, so.
Okay, for the, okay, okay. Alright, and the Housing Task Force met on May 19th, and you already updated us. And the next meeting is June 16th at 2025. Okay, future agenda items, board minimum recommendations or questions? Alright, important dates and district announcements, our next school meeting is our retreat, which is this coming Monday, June 16th at 6:00 PM at the library upstairs. And there will be, that will be mainly talking about, there's not like a formal agenda for that, but we're going to have a couple of, all our things that will be passed to second reading, we'll do, and then we'll also do board goals. And we will have a short non-public there as well, we've had some updates from legal about some, and that's all. I need a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Oh, Richard's making a motion to adjourn, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second